I'd like to welcome you all here tonight. My name is Diana Howard. I am the chair of the Virginia Beach Tea Party. Our forum is going to be only the Centerville candidates. And the reason we're only doing Centerville candidates is this is a special election. And that is because the mayor resigned. And when he resigned his seat, his seat also is the special election. But two of our city council members, Bobby Dyer and Ben Davenport, both decided to jump in the race. And that means that one of them is going to lose their seat. So there'll be a new person in the Centerville race, one of these candidates right here. So we decided to just concentrate on these candidates tonight. They had until August 17th to get their paperwork and get ratified for this. So that's why they were not in our last forum. We're going to have one minute opening. And we're going to go from left to right. You'll have to pass the microphone. We'll have one minute opening. When we start the questions, then you start it. You'll get the first question. And we'll go on about one minute to answer it. And then you will start with the second question and on until we get to the closing, which would also be a minute. Please pay attention to our timekeeping right here. You will get a 30 second, which is the yellow, a 15 second, which is the orange, and stop. And please stop when you see the red. So we have a nice round of applause for these candidates. Oh, that's right. I did forget to say this, but none of you were incumbents, so I didn't think I had to. But if any of you pull out another candidate, as sometimes people do, so this candidate got this or whatever, the other candidate will have, the candidate you pull out will have 30 seconds for their vote. You, however, will not have any time to answer that, your vote, and they could have mentioned you. So we're giving them extra time. So think it up before you go. Okay? All right. So opening statement is Mr. Schesbester?
Jessica.
Schesbester.
That might be my mic not being on.
Make sure the microphone, my mic is on.
Yes, testing.
Will you please start with your opening statement?
Hello, everybody. I begin by saying, Virginia Beach government doesn't care about you. They want you, even need you, for taxes, that is. They're indifferent about you otherwise. If you care about citizens, the government must not neglect them, and must not harm them. My guiding philosophy propels a government harm. Voting for Conrad Schesbester on November 6th is support for government respecting all Virginia Beach citizens, from the back bay soybean farmers to the financially strapped millennial to the shore drive coffee shop owner. My philosophy being for all. Thank you.
Ms. Wu.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. I believe it's time to do politics and approach politics in a different manner. I believe it takes coming together. Politics is divisive, and it's negative, and sometimes it's downright nasty. But it takes us coming together. My platform is on education, safe neighborhoods, and empowering our local businesses. But none of this is able to be implemented if we don't come together. So I'm asking for your support on November 6th. A vote for me is a vote for coming together to put you the citizen first. Thank you.
Mr. Ray.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Eric Ray, and I'm your candidate for the Virginia Beach City Council, representing the Centerville district. Thank you for having us out tonight. I want to tell you a little bit about me and why I'm running. I'm a United States Navy veteran. I served our country in the United States Navy as a yeoman. I am a first generation field director homeowner. And in 2018, we won the best of Norfolk, the best funeral in Norfolk. I'm running on three passionate reasons. First, I want to make sure that we fix flooding today, immediate, and not in 15 years. I want to make sure that we fix flooding now and not in 15 years. Because none of this really matters if our homes are flooded on the inside of all the stuff that we do. Second, I want to make sure that we do our projects. We want to make sure for public safety and fixing paper pressure. Lastly, Virginia Beach is going to be open for business. We're going to make sure that we can get new businesses, attract them here, and it will not be for special interest proneness. Folks, I need your help. And as John Moss would say, all the way with Eric Ray.
After we've had our opening statement, I was told to check and make sure all of you got a sheet when you came in for straw poll, because you hit today, we want you to pick the candidates you like the best and stick it in the straw poll. Does anyone have one? Does anyone need one? Does anyone need one? If you need a pen on your way out, there are pens on that table. Okay? You only get to pick one. I know this is a great pen, but you only get a single one. Now we will start with the questions, and we'll start with flood. Ms. Wu. Should we build a new city hall, or should it wait 15 years to be incrementally flooded while it floods?
I don't think we need to wait 15 years to fix the flooding. It's a serious issue now, and it takes common sense solutions. Common sense means taking care of maintenance. Common sense means holding city officials accountable, making sure the funds we've already paid goes to those areas that we've allocated. Common sense makes sure that we don't plan to build in flooded areas in the future. So I think that flooding should take, the improvements for flooding should take place now, not later. And as far as city hall, I know they have issues, and that building needs to be addressed, but flooding takes precedent over that.
Mr. Ray.
A few weeks ago, I went out, myself and Jessica Abbott, we went out and we went through the floods. We went through the actual water, and we went through, we talked to neighbors, and we heard their, we basically heard what they, their concerns. A few years ago, Matthew hit, we went out, in 2016, we went out to Green Run, and I saw the devastation, and I saw the things outside. I think it was a yard sale, because I could not consciously think that flooding would go in people's homes, that people live in neighborhoods with no drainage. Folks, this is a serious issue. And, you know, we can have all the talk in the world, but I want to put, I want to implement spillways. And I think we can take a look at those solutions. We need to also take a look at what we have in our budget to make sure that it adequately goes there, and that the maintenance is basically doing what it's supposed to do. So no, I don't think that we should build a new city hall and do a flooding, because our citizens just can't afford that.
Mr. Venter?
Mr. Carter.
Oh, my God. Thank you.
Do not build a new town hall at all. Fix flooding down. If you want to do anything for city hall, do that over 15 years via refurbishment. Otherwise, just put the money in flood.
Okay. The next question, set of questions. Eric Ray will start. So how would you prioritize flooding in the CIP? How would you use the funds or you shift them around?
Well, first of all, we have a study for every single thing. And we have special interest projects. We got a $68 million project down there at the oceanfront, if you heard of that. Sportsplex is being built. I think that would be a great place to start to fix flooding. We need to make sure the Moss, the Moss Abbott-Dyer plan, they basically address that. And I think that we need to really start looking, stop looking at special interests, and really start looking at our priorities. And something else I did want to say, you know, flooding's been here for a long time. And we've all, we've had this now we're up for election, everyone wants to fix flooding. Everyone has this great thing about, we got a plan for flooding. Well, you know what? You need to get a new city council with a fresh set of ideas to go with John Moss and Jessica Abbott, and make sure those funds get distributed adequately.
In my recollection, from the town hall Tea Party forum across the way for the previous candidates, Louis Jones, the current mayor, said there's already $329 million put in the capital boost project. So just decrease all the amount of money that you would otherwise put for something like a superfluous sportsplex down at the beach. Just increase the amount that would go to flood.
Ms. Sabrina.
So I had a chance to sit down and talk with some of the city officials about the flooding issues. And I addressed the fact that we need to find state and federal funding for these issues. And that's the priority, finding the state funding, finding the federal funding to address those issues that are most pertinent and that are most important and emergency first. Then we use the money that's from CIP to address those other areas that state funding doesn't cover under those guidelines. That will be my plan.
Okay. So the fourth question, we will start with Conrad. Should taxpayer money be used to benefit a thriving development?
Yeah, Conrad.
Simple and easy answers, and this is a simple and easy answering, yes. No, I work at a hotel at the beach. I wouldn't want to have one of my hotel bosses get a bunch of extra public money just to expand and create another hotel. We can do that with the zone.
Sabrina. I'd say no.
I think it'd be foolish for anyone to say, yeah, absolutely, and raise taxes and do it. No, you know, whenever you do that, you have to raise taxes. And there's a great quote that says, raising taxes, it destroys jobs, it destroys businesses, it takes away hope. And that's what we're not going to do. And I'm looking at everything that we're doing, we're looking at reaching for federal funding, how are we going to pay for it? Because when those federal funds come, they're attached to something. And that means what happens? We got to pay your taxes. So folks, I'm saying no to that. No, no, no.
Okay. The next question, Sabrina will start. Are you in favor of the ITA, which is comprehensive plan, which stands for interfacilities traffic area, in case you didn't know what that acronym is for?
Am I in favor of it?
Yes.
I'm in favor of it to the point where we want to make sure that we keep those airways free, and that there's no development in those areas near Oceana and the field, that's in Chesapeake. We want to make sure we keep development away from those areas, and make sure we take care of the airspace and control what's going on in the airspace areas.
Okay. No, it would be you next.
Well, a lot of that's wetlands, and it's probably going to be owned, a lot of it's going to be owned by the city. There's a hospital going there. Most of it is really not developed. And most of the land is area isolation compatible, AICUZ in that as well. It presumes that, you know, I would agree with them, because it presumes that there could be a mixed-use development, AKA another town center, city hall, more taxpayer money, your taxes continue to go up. So no.
Conrad.
I'm leaning against it pretty heavily. I would really like it to be reformed. There's a couple of reasons why. A good friend of mine told me that a new city hall would be built with it. There's also a biotech firm that is using part of that in order to get started. Their subsidized housing for city workers is coming from it. The sportsplex is part of that. All that seems to be coming from the same place, ITA. So I'm leaning against it.
Okay. Okay. So the next question, we start, Eric will be starting the next question. All right. Next question, do you support the ARP program? Why, why not? That stands for agricultural reserve.
You know, there's a great gentleman that was, that's in this room. He should remain named, was one of the greatest speeches of his life, when one of our city council members got the ARP money. And he mentioned that there was no way that there was, that they're hurting families and they're hurting people. Why do we, why do you get taxpayer money? She sat there and she didn't vote for it, but she still got it. I think the ARP, we need to do something for agriculture. I'm not saying that we shouldn't, because that is still a good issue. However, I am against corporate law.
Conrad.
Essentially the same question regarding private partnerships, only the private is the, or to be a farmer. So I'd have to be against increasing subsidies for local farmers. I want it to be a market solution for that, as opposed to a government solution.
Sabrina.
Yes, I do support it.
What? Says why, why?
Well, I support it because, you know, in my opinion, that funding is used for the farmers. It's there so that they don't give their development rights away. And I believe the funding will be supportive for them. So I do support it.
Okay. So Conrad will start the next question. Residents defeated light rail in a referendum. Would you bring it back?
We brought it up in 1999. We brought it up in 2016. I don't think three strikes, you're out is a good thing for that. I think two strikes is pretty good. Let's look at other ways to improve public transit. A good idea might be rapid restriets.
Sabrina.
So the citizen said no, so no, I would not bring it back. However, we need to do something, because in the region, we'll be receiving at least 1 billion people over a certain number of years. And so at some point, we do need the plan for the future.
Eric.
Yeah, I miss bringing all those, getting all those signatures and everything like that. Rally the troops, no, I'm just kidding, I'm kidding. No, I'm 100% against it. You know, when we start talking about things like that, you have the government, and what happens is that they have all of the, you know, your taxes are going to increase at a certain, at a certain rate. And so when we start talking about the region, I don't think that Norfolk and Virginia, I don't think Norfolk and Chesapeake and Portsmouth should have anything to do with our public transit system. I think that we basically, our city is our city. And we're in the, I don't want to say the greatest city in the world, but this is a really good city. And so our city should just be our city, hands down. So no, I would not want to bring light rail back.
Okay. The next question will start, Sabrina. Do you believe we should have a referendum on huge million dollar projects per a city charter? That's why currently we have the Virginia Development Authority that broadcasts this out.
So I'm sorry. Can you say that again?
Do you believe we should have a referendum on huge million dollar projects per our city charter?
Good question. At this point, I'd have to research that a little bit more, because I am a new candidate. And I would like to make sure that we make the right decision. I welcome any feedback that you would have on that, because I'd like to do what would be in your best interest. So I'd like to research that more.
Eric.
Of course. The charter says $10 million. Anything past $10 million and will be changed. It has to go, it should go to referendum. They have been going back and they've been going through the Development Authority, and they've been making these projects. You got the $68 million deal down there, you got the dome site, you have all of these other different projects. It's pet projects that you get, that you basically don't have a say for. And so I think the citizen should always have a say, when we're spending your tax dollars. And so with that being said, I want to also put in our package, our legislative package, one of the first things we want to do, that we want to get our delegates of senators to really go to the General Assembly and redo that. Because we should not be funneling funds through the development.
Conrad.
The Virginia Beach Development Association, to put it simply, is bureaucracy, and it's taking decisions on public money out of the hands of the citizens itself. Burford Riddins are great, especially in a direct democracy like Virginia Beach. So let's put the expensive projects in the citizens' hands somewhere.
Okay. Eric, you just started the next question. Would you vote to put district voting on the ballot? Why, why not?
We went out back in 2012, and we worked with a lot of people who were opposite political perspectives, and we wanted to get that done. We were, we thought it was short. But I think that if you live in the district, you're representative, your district should have a say in who their representative is. We shouldn't have the whole city be run by one section of the city. If you live in Centerville, the people of Centerville should be able to elect me. If you live in Rose Hall, the people of Rose Hall should be able to vote for them. If you're at large, you'll be able to vote for John Moss.
I do support reforming the voting system. Taking it away from at large, making it district centric, right for Centerville, just like my friends here. And I would rather focus on canvassing than reaching out to people who I would represent directly, as opposed to having to go a short drive to the beach down in Pongo just to spread my name around. It really dilutes the impact of democracy of who I'm representing as a Centerville representative.
When you're talking on the microphone, try and get a little closer, you know, because people in the back can't hear you. Sabrina.
That is, well, yes. Not only the fact that it would be easier for candidates, but I think it either should be in all districts or all at large. It'd be more uniform, and I think it would be better for the citizens. We have the candidates will be able to focus on one district area. So yes.
Thank you. Conrad, you will begin answering the next question. What is your position on rerouting of Atlantic Avenue? Should the citizens be able to do that on ballot or at the ballot? Who would you fund them if they wanted?
Would I fund it? No. Would I have them redirected? Well, I would like the citizens of Virginia Beach to decide to do that if they want to. I happen to drive Atlantic Avenue every single time I go to work. I'd rather not have to write it for construction for a few years, just because something that is meaningless, like redirecting Atlantic Avenue.
Sabrina.
So I'd say, again, let the neighboring citizens make that decision. Would I fund it? That's funding that I don't think public dollars should be used to fund that project. So no, I would not like.
Eric.
No to another project at Bruce Thompson, absolutely not.
Okay. Conrad, Eric will ask, Sabrina started the next question. Hey, Sabrina, do you think Virginia Beach should be part of a regional government?
I think whether we want to or not, we are a part of the region. We're a part of the Hampton Roads, we're a part of the 757. And regionalism not only just decides or describes where we are, but it talks about being, working together, partnering. So I would say yes.
Eric.
I kind of want to point a question back to you guys. Would you like everyone in your neighborhood to tell you what you should and shouldn't do in your neighborhood? Absolutely not. We do have regional forms of government. And to be honest, Virginia Beach, our trash, our trash system, Virginia Beach bears the bulk of it. That's why there's a yard out there in Centerville that's just waiting. If one of the other cities wants to be, you know, like they can be, then we will do our own trash here. You know, I'm not for regionalism. Let's just say that. I'm just not for regionalism, because Virginia Beach is Virginia Beach. And I don't think that Virginia Beach should be able to pick up a tab for Norfolk, and they're mismanaged. I don't think they should pick up the tab for other cities, and they're mismanaged. So no. Our people are flooding. Homes are flooding, neighborhoods are flooding. We have home priorities first, before we go play with Norfolk.
Diana.
I like the idea of Virginia Beach and Norfolk and Chesapeake and Newport News and all the like, being friendly with each other. I wouldn't want to formalize or codify it as a region, because that sounds suspiciously like a tax. It would be an undercore.
I would like to point out something at this point. Raise your hand. How many of you have heard, no, I'm asking a question. How many of you have heard of the Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Commission? The Hampton Roads TPO? The Hampton Roads Planning District Commission? The Transit District, Hampton Roads oversees HRT. Okay. We are already working together as a region. Okay. Just wanted to point that out. You might want to look into that.
More of a shot than marriage, if you will.
What are your ideas on diversifying the economy and, who entered last?
Conrad.
So, so Eric will start.
I'm sorry, say it one more time.
What are your ideas to diversify the economy?
I'm a small business, and one of the reasons why my business is not in Virginia Beach is because of the big bureaucracy that it takes to go and open a business in Virginia Beach. Surprisingly, Norfolk was a little bit easier. My business is right on the line, so I still attract a lot of Virginia Beach residents. I want to basically streamline the process. I want to make sure that the process, you should be able to go to one department. At one department, you should be able to access zoning, you should be able to access planning, and any other department that it takes to open your small business. That's number one. The second thing is I want to make sure that veterans, as a veteran, we want to make sure that our veterans are able to open up small businesses here. I also want to attract larger businesses as well. We've got a great use at the oceanfront, and we, you know, everything is to one developer. I think a lot of that stuff should go to our private citizens, because our citizens know best about our city, not someone else, not bureaucracy.
Conrad.
I happen to think that economies diversify themselves simply because we all decide to spend money the way we like to spend money. So what I would like to do is just drop a lot of regulations and fees. It would help, you know, businesses. And also, I want to cut the cost of living for people that have to live here, because we want to spend our money as opposed to having to go to taxes and rent especially. So do that, we'll be likely better.
Sabrina.
So right now, we focus on defense, agriculture, and tourism. We need to develop another area, and that would be technology. The transatlantic cables are already being implemented and placed in this area. That's an area where we can continue to grow and develop in. And it's also the biomedical park. That is another area that can be nurtured and developed, and will create revenue for the city of Virginia Beach.
Okay. Conrad, you get to start the next question. If elected, what steps would you take to put the city on a firmer financial footing? This is in reference to the debt that we have earned.
Well, take the current two no votes that happens to allow us spending and make it a fair one with my vote, and then encourage the others to vote no with me on spending projects that we don't need, and then aggressively work to fix future debt with unfunded liabilities. We get that handled, we're good.
Sabrina. So I believe we need to continue to generate revenue to pay down our debt, so that we're not in a recession. We have to, I believe that, you know, Virginia Beach has done a good job of making sure we have a triple A rating bond. That's very important for us to continue to grow and develop as a city. So we have to continue to do that, and we have to continue to nurture those other legs of the economy and diversify, and then we'll get our debt down.
Eric.
I can repeat the question? I'm sorry.
It's okay. If elected, what would you do to put the city on a firmer financial footing, current you have and what is going to have?
First of all.
Unfunded and a dead debt.
Well, first of all, we need six votes. So we can't do anything without six votes. The way the current council is made up, you know, you're not going to get the six votes. So in case we do get six votes, I want to reprioritize for flooding, because we have the wrong priorities. Second, when we bar for the sportsplex, we can't bar for flooding. They were outvoting on the sportsplex, and this type of thing, you know, it keeps happening. Second, we can lighten and realign $150 million with six votes, because we are prioritizing people. Get out of the dome site, city hall, fire Dave Hanson, Deputy City Manager, and take 54 cents for the ARP projects for flooding.
Okay. Next question will start, Sabrina. Are you in favor of a $68 million sports center?
So I believe the sports center has already been approved, and it's going to go forward. I'm in favor of the fact that the sports center is going to help with the off-season and tourism. It's going to bring more funding to that area. But the issue is this, when people come and they support that area, guess what they're going to do? They're going to support the surrounding areas of Virginia Beach. When they support the surrounding areas of Virginia Beach, that's going to bring growth to our economy. So look at the whole picture, not just a small part of it, which is the $68 million. Look at the big picture, what it's going to do to the whole area.
Eric.
When you raise, again, let's go back to the Economic Development Authority. When you raise $68 million, where did that money come from? Everyone's sitting in this room. Your taxes go up. I was recently in Sea-Tac, I was recently in Sea-Tac, and the plan was given. And some of the citizens had a problem with, they were lied to about the traffic pattern. The traffic pattern was supposed to go out onto 19th Street, but according to the city staff, it's going out on Virginia Beach Boulevard. Well, what happens? Well, now you've got more traffic congestion. So now the citizens who live in that area can't get out of their house, because, you know what? Everything that goes down towards Sea-Tac is now going straight through. Folks, we have a issue here. I am not for that, and you all were not for that. I am not for that and you all were not for that as well. We have to start getting city council members that start listening to the citizens and not special interests.
If I was there, I would have voted no. If something like that were to begin, I will vote no. Sportsplexes and sports arenas don't generate the type of economic return that every single time they bring one up, they say will happen. So it would actually probably be better just to drop sixty-eight million dollars on us from the helicopter, as Mark Freeman would say, and let us spend it.
All right, so Eric, you will get to be the first on this question. So they tell us that tourism keeps our taxes low and yet every year they raise them, right? So since the tip fund is flush with money, should we reassess the revenues going to it and how?
Yeah, we should reassess it. Now tourism, and let's just be, let's be real, be honest about it, tourism is a pretty big industry. It, it does have a big industry and a lot of people profit off of that and I think a lot of our citizens do as well. But our tip fund should be able to be used for projects that are for all the citizens. It should not stay at the oceanfront. Those, you know, there was a tip fund, I think that was on sand bridge, sand replenishment, and some of that went to schools, which wasn't a bad idea. So I think this tip fund should be able to be brought back to the citizens. Now, I will say this as well, when we talk about other, Tom Vili always gives me when he holds that thing up. But, but pretty much, yeah, I'm for taking the TIP fund and making sure that it goes to projects for all citizens, like putting drains in Green Run and those type of places.
Conrad.
I happen to work at a hotel up the beach and I know that most of the tip fund is going to be funded by people who don't actually live in Virginia Beach. But since we all are going to use this money, I always say, especially as somebody who's running for Senate bill, we would like to see some of that money spent in Senate bill. Prince of San Diego would like to see it spent in Prince of San. Evil on Tour Drive would like to see it too. So just make sure we all get to use our own tax money.
Sabrina.
So I'm an administrator and I'm a financial administrator. I do budgeting. I don't take funds from another place and allocate it to where I want. As a general rule, funding that's been separated for a specific plan and implemented for that purpose must stay there and must be used for that purpose. Otherwise, you start getting into areas where you're overspending, allocating and stealing. So I don't think you should do it. Tip was for, is, was allocated for a specific purpose and it should be used for that purpose.
The question was, should we reassess it? That would be changing the fund for different, say, the amusement tax, a hundred percent of all of the tip fund. We live here year-round. Would you be in favor of taking part of the amusement tax and putting that in the general fund?
No.
Eric?
I'm sorry.
I'm asking the same question.
I'm sorry, say it one more time, I'm sorry.
Okay. In the tip fund, the tip fund gets hotel tax, it gets meal tax, and it gets the amusement tax and I think it also gets cigarette taxes, right? But a hundred percent of the amusement tax that's collected for the city of Virginia Beach, that's everybody that goes to the theater, everybody that goes to the sandlot, goes to the ample theater, goes bowling, golf, whatever. All that tax revenue goes to the tip fund. Since we live here year-round, I assume part of that is coming from the residents of Virginia Beach. Would you be in favor of reassessing a portion of that to the general fund?
Absolutely.
To assess and how much of that you think we should get?
Absolutely. There's no real, I guess, I guess we have to look at formula and all that and we'll figure out those numbers. But, but I am in favor.
Conrad.
No, she's asking.
Yeah, this was, it was on to the same question, you know, I'm sorry, just wanted to clarify that part, just what they were trying to get at.
Yes, as a future legislator, I would like to legislate it, we will reform it so we can, you know, spread our own tax money to all of Virginia Beach taxpayers.
Okay. So the next person to lead on this will be Sabrina. Are you in favor of reducing the size and scope of government?
I said reducing the size of government, my answer would be no.
Eric.
Absolutely.
Conrad.
I just paid a property tax on my bullets bank of jetty, two hundred dollars. Yes, I would reduce the scope of government. I want to keep my money.
Okay. So Eric, you get to, you know, honor yourself. Does Virginia Beach have a problem with corruption?
Yes, it does. Again, I work at the ocean front. There are all developers there. That's where a lot of the public money is going to help them just become richer. So of course they have to spend their money on legislators to help them get richer. I would vote against that.
Sabrina.
So your question is about, do you think Virginia Beach is in favor of cronyism?
Do you think we have a crony capitalism problem here in Virginia Beach?
No, I don't think so. I think that, you know, it can be seen that way, but again, you got to look at the big picture. You got to look at the goal of what we're trying to do in Virginia Beach and economic development. So I don't think that that's a problem. That's, that's a key hope that people use to make you think that government has run them up, but no, I don't think so.
Eric.
Legal is a, legal, be legal is the shortest form that you have to, that's the shortest benchmark. You know, the way I look at it, we have, we have the opportunity to get six votes. Just because it's legal doesn't mean it's ethical. So do we have a crony capitalism problem? You know, a lot of questionable things happen, but they have six votes. And they make, and they basically make the rules. So that should be an indicator and that should be a motivator for us to get out and get six votes so that we can end the crony capitalism.
All right, so Sabrina, you will lead the next question. The city has a propensity to bury citizens in data to conceal their intentions. If elected, how would you remedy this problem?
I think it's important to be transparent. I think it's important to hold forums. It's important to make sure that we explain to the citizens what's going on with funding. So I think basically making sure that citizens have access to that data, helping them understand what the data means. I think that's very important. So definitely keeping you informed, keeping you in the loop. If you have questions, address those questions. If you want to know how we came to a sixty-eight million dollar infrastructure, we should let you know how. You have the right to know and I think transparency is being, starts with that.
Eric.
I don't take for granted that we have some very informed citizens. I mean, we have some citizens who have put together their own budget. They went when they wanted to raise taxes, some citizens sat down together with legislators, and they came up with their own budget without raising taxes. So I think that we have some pretty informed citizens. What's the problem is that when you go before city council, this is totally blowing my whole game together. But when you go to city council, I've heard many of you say, please don't raise my taxes. Please, I have, I'm on a fixed income, please, we can't afford it. And then the vote still happens. I think our citizens are pretty informed. And I think that a lot of our citizens are, they understand the budget and they understand where the money is going and how it's being spent and they understand where it's being funneled through. Folks, again, we have, we have an opportunity to have six votes, six votes on council to stop all of this so that everything that you ask us for, you all will get.
Conrad.
My favorite congressperson is Justin Amos from Michigan. My two favorite city council people, John Moss, Jessica, they're my favorites for one particular reason. They're incredibly transparent. I'm not going to bury you in anything, I'm going to let you know everything I see.
Okay, Eric, you will start off. Do you approve of the city manager's performance? What would you do about it?
Oh, I tell you, that good old Virginia problem.
Fire him.
You know, in, in the private sector, I would not have been able to work at a job and be able to stay there pulling some of the things up in the hole. And so pretty much I am for looking at it and evaluating it and firing it.
I would really like Dave Hansen, I just don't want it to get fused up. So yes, I would endorse the idea of removing him from this position, but we also might want to look at removing the concept of the city manager and let us, the city council people and the mayors have more of that help.
Sabrina.
So let's understand, there's a difference between performance and behavior. Don't agree with the behavior, but as far as the performance and keeping in line with moving Virginia Beach forward and growing Virginia Beach, he's met those performance goals and aligned himself with those policies. Now his behavior is different and that's under a whole different set of rules and should be handled in a different manner. Performance over behavior. Behavior, I don't agree with it. Performance and keeping in line with the city of Virginia Beach, yes.
Okay, the next question, Conrad, you lead. What should we do about the conflict of interest on boards and commissions?
This is the question I think I've released experience on. So while in that conflict of interest, just got to reduce it. We have some individuals here that's running for school boards, all the other boards, I imagine. We've got to increase transparency so we can be able to spot the context of interest, then it won't be a problem.
Sabrina.
I think it's important that we select, we're selecting the best people, the best candidates for positions. And I think it's also important that we look at our talent base, our talent bank. We're not doing everything that we can to get the best qualified and talented people. And when we don't do that, then you may have issues with conflict. But if you broaden the spectrum, make sure that we do all that we're doing to focus on that talent and use the people who are applying for those positions, I think you'll see a difference there.
Eric.
A few years ago I applied for planning. Not far I had a pretty good shot at it, I think I'm pretty qualified. One of our councilmen told me that our outgoing mayor, well, our previous mayor, says no, he didn't support me when I ran. Absolutely not. So now you have someone that was totally qualified, met all requirements, lived in the district, but because of a few people, no. Folks, we have, again, I'm harping on the six vote thing because it's so essential. We have got to change the way the city is run and we have to change the way that this cronyism heats on coming up and down the line. Even with the Cavalier deal, Cavalier deal, that was an inside deal, everyone knows about that. So at the end of the day, we've got to stop this capital cronyism and we have to start giving the power back to the citizens.
Okay, Sabrina, you will lead on this question. Should the Virginia Beach Development Authority be eliminated?
So I, my answer for that will be no. I think it's doing really good with our workforce, training our next generation and those who are in the workforce, keeping our employment low and it has a lot of great programs to grow our economy. And there are also programs for our young people and education, so no.
Eric.
Yes, and the reason why I say that is because that's a slush fund money vehicle, that's what they're using that for. Let's, let's talk about a few things. First of all, there's a crover that's on Collin Road, near Collin Road. Twenty-five million dollars they spent of their own money not a drop of dime for the taxpayer. It didn't go for the development authority, it didn't go to referendum. They have a business plan, they found somewhere they wanted to go and they built, and they invested money in our city. I want people that want to invest money in our city. I don't want to raise Andy Mon's taxes to make sure that, that my business can be successful. So yes, I want to eliminate the Virginia Beach Development Authority. I want to make sure that we can do this the correct way because it did go for the General Assembly. So we need to make steps in the moment.
Conrad.
The PBDA is a bureaucracy. Bureaucracy means that you don't get a choice in deciding how it runs and that creates corruption. You dissolve it, of course, I have the Richmond first, if you dissolve it, you're going to give us, your representatives, the power to do that. Then you could fire us if you don't like what we bring.
Okay, Eric, you will lead on this one. Are you in favor of term limits?
We're up for election every four years, got to term limit.
Conrad.
I understand why people like term limits because it weeds out the corrupt politicians, but what if you really like your politicians? What if you all have wrong policy and you could report it every single time? In which case, yeah, I would buy for me, but.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Your favorite term, pause. Okay. Your last, Conrad starts. Are you associated with or do you receive financial benefits from Town Bank?
No.
I have an account with Town Bank.
Eric.
My personal account would maybe federal my business account with Town Bank. Oh, I know, I, they gave me breaks. But any vote that comes up with Town Bank, I will, I promise to abstain.
Okay, so, who else? So Sabrina leads, right? Sabrina, how many of you have ever have conferred with Mayor Sessions or Bruce Thompson about your stance on any of these issues before beginning tonight?
I have not.
Okay, I did read the whole thing properly. My fault. Want to know if an issue comes up involving Mayor Sessions and Bruce Thompson, what about your stance on issues before voting? Would you, would you confer with them before you voted on an issue? That's what they're asking.
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay, Eric.
I'm totally backed by you, the citizens. One of my opponents is, is backed by Rosemary Wilson and the mayor. And that is pretty, I think they are very influential. We had a council person years ago that was just unelected. She was asleep at the switch and the voters voted her out. And so therefore that is not, I have no conversations with Will or Rosemary or any other council person on the, in that whole cabal.
Okay.
Bankers in government, a mash made in heaven, right? I've never, I've spoken to both Sessions. I would think I would, I'm a manager in the government.
Did you answer that question?
Yes.
You did, you started. Conrad, you will start. Party insiders like to tell new candidates, you pick a side, whose side are you on?
I've been a Republican, I've been told to pick a side. I'm not going to pick a side, I'm on the citizen's side, and that's not going to be a party.
Sabrina.
So since day one, when I heard that this position would be open, I was out conferring, going to the forums, talking to the citizens to see what was important to them. So there is no issue of what side I'm on, I'm on the side of the citizen and that's the position that I will keep.
Eric.
I'm backed by you, the citizens, and that's where it's going to be.
Sabrina, you start then. Are you for gun control?
I am, I think it's important that we make sure that we keep our communities, our children, our schools safe, so yes, I am.
Eric.
Gun control is not a city council issue, however, that all leads back to my whole thing that I am for fixing the pay pressure for our public, fire and police state, and police officers. And so with that being said, personally, I'm a second member, but that is not a city council issue. The city council does not have anything that's been made over eliminating guns out of federal buildings or state buildings or anything like that. That's, that's just not our job.
Conrad.
D.C. versus Heller is one of my favorite Supreme Court decisions. And I will admit that I wouldn't want government anywhere around trying to regulate it unless it's something clear. Something clear in presidential could be someone who has any particular intelligence, single regulation, but let the individuals have.
Okay, the next question, you will start, Eric. What have you done to make the city better?
Well, I'm from Port Smith, so I moved here. That's, that's the first thing. I'm a Republican, that's why I'm doing this, considering that. No, seriously, I, I was actually, hey, I was actually on the referendum for defeating light rail in which we went out and we got. for defeating Light Rail, in which we went out and we got two quarters, and we got, uh, we got all the people involved, and we beat Light Rail last November. I was in favor of district voting. We went out last, in 2012, in the heat and everywhere else, and we went ahead and we got, we wanted to get district vote, voting back on the ballot, and that's what we're gonna do again. How I'm gonna make Virginia Beach better, we're gonna make Virginia Beach better first because it's gonna be open for business to all citizens, not just a select few. And we want to make sure that we can do all of our projects, infrastructure, public safety, schools, without burning the taxpayers with the taxpayers.
Conrad?
I was born on First Communal Road in October of 1986. I went to Glenwood Elementary School, I went to Salem Middle School, I went to Salem High School, played football at Salem High School. Voted here all my life, I've worked here since 2004 in various positions, buy gas here, buy groceries here. Virginia Beach has been very kind to me, I'm gonna be very kind to them.
Sabrina?
I'd like to make, uh, Virginia Beach a better place, um, by, by, by staying involved in the community. Um, I've been involved in the community, I volunteer as an instructor for the Kimsville Entrepreneur Academy, making sure that we take care of our young people, making sure their, their future is bright. I am a police chaplain, I've been serving in that capacity with the, uh, Virginia Beach Police Officers for some time, I write with them, I'm out talking to citizens, making sure they're taken care of, uh, as well, and I'm also vice chair of the Minority Business Council, I served there as a volunteer as well with our entrepreneurs and our local citi- citizens and the business community.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Conrad, you will be first on this next question, panel on. My water bill was eighty-three dollars and twenty cents. Water costs three dollars and thirty cents. The rest of the bill was fees and utility taxes, taxes for services that used to be covered by real estate taxes. Do you have a plan to use this tax for expected services, not entertainment?
First order of business would be to cut those regulations and fees by eighty-three dollars, so it'd be only, again, three dollars worth of use, you're only gonna get taxed at three dollars worth of use, and then we'll cut spending elsewhere.
Sabrina?
So I think a plan to do something like that is just, um, making sure that, uh, we get rid of what's used in excess and putting it to the area that's most needed. Um, there are a lot of areas that we can put that money to big use and revenue to big use in, so, um, that will be something that I would be interested in feedback as well to make sure that we make that, make that revenue go to the right place in the right area.
Eric?
Okay, let's talk about your water bill for a second. Um, your water bill, a lot of those taxes and fees, everyone liked the regionalism, we just, we just talked about regionalism. Well, because of that good old regionalism, that's why the taxes and fees are going up. Those are passed on, so pretty much, I'm a single guy, and my water bill's gonna probably be the same as someone who has a whole large family. A lot of those are passed through, and so, I mean, you know, the city council, they've done, they've done a decent job of trying to keep it low, but at the end of the day, a lot of those are passed through, and so if we can try to get out some of the regionalism, they can be lower.
Okay, Sabrina, you will lead on this one. Not only did the city council keep the Light Rail taxes they raised, uh, they also raised taxes and fees after we defeated it. Shouldn't city council budget like we do?
Yes, I believe that we have to make sure that we stay within our budget. Um, as citizens, we have a budget, we have to maintain, so yes, I would agree, we have to maintain a budget as well.
Eric?
So the taxes were increased, and you didn't get a nominee, they love it back. I think that anytime they raise taxes, if there's, if there's a cause for it, and then the money's not used for what it's designed to go, go back to, then it goes back to the citizens, you, the citizens, that's your money. You know, we're, we're stewards of your money, so it should go back to you, the citizens. And all these raising taxes and fees, I think, again, six votes, we gotta have six votes to stop this stuff. And if it can't happen, being apathetic, we have to, we have to vote smart, and we have to vote diligently.
Conrad?
I don't necessarily like that metaphor because the government earns its money because we earned it money first. We were taxed in order for them to have money. I have to go to the beach for eight hours a day to find us to get money, and then it gets taxed. I remember that evolution, so, so I would just try to limit it to the best for my ability.
Okay, Eric, you will start and answer on this question. Which taxes or fees are you committed to eliminate or decrease if elected?
Which taxes and fees? But first of all, the Development Authority, that's a great place to start, okay? And that's where a lot of, that's where everything goes through the Development Authority. Uh, we need to start looking at the, that first, because what happens is is that we have a great city, and what happens is is that they have a project for this, a project for that, and all these different projects, and so they raise, they're gonna raise taxes on the sixteen million dollars that was just done for the Development Authority, through the Development Authority for the sports place. So no, I'm thinking the great place to start is stop funding money through the Development Authority, and let's start focusing on our priorities, like flooding.
Conrad?
My brother is ridiculously abused by the water bills every week regarding his pool. That'd probably be the first thing I'll want to learn, and maybe possible to see his troubles, which I assume thousands of others in Virginia Beach are going through the same troubles as well. I want to shut that, as well as a lot of property taxes, because the property taxes are a direct correlation to higher rents. If we reduce the price of things that are on property owners, then they're not gonna charge us as much, and then we can formulate.
Sabrina?
I think it's important that we eliminate the loophole tax, that extra tax that's on our, uh, businesses. I don't know why we have it, Virginia's one of the only ones that has that, and as vice chair of the Minority Business Council, I work with entrepreneurs and small businesses, and they don't need another excess tax to have to pay and be worried about to start their business, so that's one of the taxes I would definitely go after and eliminate it.
All right, Conrad, you will lead on answering this question. We have backlog of dredging canals, lakes and ditches. What is your plan to get this done sooner rather than later?
Stop procrastinating, spend the money for the girl and taxing for flooding, on flooding drainage, just do that part, we can get the ball rolling. I might also wanna, um, go to Richmond, D.C. and get some additional, and then we don't have to tax the grid, so this is for somebody that the government, they collect money from the reverse. Seems something to make sense.
Sabrina?
So this issue, uh, there's not one solution, it's gonna involve a, a compendium of areas that we have to focus on. One, planning, we gotta plan better. If we're putting, uh, development on areas that are potential flood zones and areas, we know that's gonna cause a problem. Accountability, we have to make sure we hold our city officials accountable, our city employees accountable. Um, I am overseeing, uh, maintenance where I work, and when there's an issue, they come to me and they expect me to fix it. So these issues for maintenance, those are things that could, could have been fixed, they need to be addressed. So routine maintenance, making sure we do that, and making sure that the funds that are already out there go to what they've been allocated for. Also, we need to make sure we work with the surrounding areas, they have the same problems we have, we can learn from them and possibly offset some of the costs to make sure we have a solution for this issue. It's not gonna be easy, but we can get through it, but we have to have a compendium of areas to focus on to combat that issue.
Eric?
Can you give me a question for a second? I'm sorry.
Uh, we have a backlog for dredging canals, lakes and ditches. What is your plan to get this done sooner rather than later?
Well, the money that was already allocated, it should, well, first of all, the money that they stole from Light Rail should actually go right towards, I think that's a good place to start. Um, there is, there's already money issued for engineering and surveying, and so, you know, that's pretty much, you know, that, that's pretty much a good start. Um, the one thing I am, I, I am concerned about as far as, you know, how we can do this, Virginia Beach, we can really, we, we can do this, and we have to, you know, does that take raising the taxes to do it? Um, as, that's a home issue, I think that is a very, uh, and what I mean by home, that's a Virginia Beach family issue, that's something that Virginia Beach needs to work out, we don't need to work out with Norfolk, we don't need to work out with Chesapeake, but this is a Virginia Beach issue. Uh, at the end of the day, the more we start getting involved in other cities, the more your taxes are really gonna get raised.
All right, Sabrina? City council allocated ARP funds to Light Rail, but when Light Rail failed, they would not allocate those funds to flooding. Isn't flooding a higher priority than Light Rail?
So, uh, flooding is certainly a higher priority than Light Rail, yes. That funding that was supposed to be allocated to Light Rail needs to go back to that fund area, again, as a general rule, if it was allocated for a certain specific purpose, it needs to go back where it belongs.
Eric?
We're dealing with two issues here. Light Rail was a development, it was a development project. Flooding is safety, infrastructure, so those, anytime the money's that, that, that city council's raising taxes on, it should go back to what it was, it should go back to you, the citizens. And, and what's the three core functions of city government? Public safety, schools, infrastructure. Not Light Rail, not a dome site, not a sports place, so those funds should go back, tho- those funds should have never been taken in the first place.
Conrad?
We voted twice against Light Rail, but every time a strong thunderstorm hits, we don't have the power to throw away flooding, so us, the city council members in the future, will be empowered to redirect funding to where it should go, so let's forget Light Rail, let's remember flooding happens every week.
Eric, you start off. Before Hurricane Matthew, Neighborhoods and I Caragona have been flooding for years. Says where has the billion dollars in stormwater fees gone? Do we have people on city council that are asking these questions? And we did an audit, but we audited only probably two years. Would you all vote in favor of doing an audit from the time the stormwater fee was implemented to find out whether those storms had occurred?
Abs- absolutely, absolutely. Um, I wanna make sure that we can be, you know, people, you know, talk about transparent government and, and things like that, and I think that's, yeah, I, I would definitely favor that. Again, when I went through Green Run, when Hurricane Matthew hit, again, it was unconscionable to think, and I was riding a John accident in, in Chesapeake, and I said, why are they having a dark sale? And in my ignorance, I'm thinking, I could not imagine water going into someone's home, people had everything outside. There are people who have not yet recovered from that, and we're talking about sports places, and we're talking about Light Rail. Folks, we got, we have issues that is far bigger, and again, as I said, it's a develop- development issue, or is there an infrastructure or core functional government issue? And our three core functions of government, public safety, infrastructure, and education, and we're gonna make sure that we get that once you put Eric Gray on city council.
Conrad?
Well, we're taxed for it, it's not spent on it, so where does it go? We need to figure out where it goes, how do we do that? An audit, uh, but also has that.
Sabrina?
Say yes, I definitely would support an audit, it's very important that city government be transparent, and I definitely would also support keeping you involved in what's happened with those funds, and keeping you first in the know in that situation, so yes.
Okay, Conrad, you will start on your favor of private public partnerships.
No.
When should they be used if you are?
You know, you know the best programs ever wait for public private partnerships unless you think about, um, the private road companies who use tax, sell it to you.
Um, oftentimes, if you're gonna do a public-private partnership, you have to make sure there are incentives put in there to pay for, or it pays for itself and it's not a burden on the taxpayer, so yes, when it's done properly. Uh, Town Center is a great example of that, um, you see people enjoying Town Center all the time, so I think when it's done properly, it will be a win for everyone.
Eric?
Private, public, private partnership, now, now, let's just talk about that, there's good and there's bad. The Sand Bridge, Sand Replenishment Fund was a very good public-private partnership. I think that worked out, and I think it was decent, so that, there is, there is that, that was basically a pretty decent public-private partnership. When I opened my business in 2015, I couldn't go to the city of Norfolk and get a check, they didn't give me any, any kind of subsidies, I didn't get a, as a matter of fact, I got inspected, I came in, and they, and, and they wanted to tax me and, and charge me everything, well, you didn't have this, you didn't have that, so I had to get people like Brad to come out and do something what they call a com check. Com check, what, what that is, is you come out, they wanna do your air quality control. Cost me fifteen hundred dollars. Taxpayers didn't pay for it, I paid for it. So when you get into, when you get into the level of picking winners and losers, it never works out for the taxpayer, it always works out for the special interests.
Okay, Sabrina, you start. Would you support Virginia Beach being a sanctuary city?
I, I think with, with that question, I don't, I don't really know if that's a city council question.
Yes, it is.
Is, is it a city council question?
I, I didn't write the question.
I, I don't know that that's-
I don't think they vote on sanctuary cities and-
Yeah, I, I don't think that's a city council question, and I think in cer- certain cer- in certain circumstances, you know, I'd have to look at it on a case-by-case basis.
Virginia Beach isn't a sanctuary city.
Eric?
Well, first of all, the city should be complying with the federal government, and they should not be playing president and senator and house delegate member and all that other stuff, should be playing attorney general. So no, I'm not in favor of Virginia Beach being a sanctuary city, um, and I think it's wrong when cities, the city mayors get involved and go on Fox News and say that they're dreamers and that they're born here. Now, that's a whole federal issue, the city council can't, but what the city council can't do is make sure that our police, we work with our federal investigators and we work with our federal authorities, and make sure that this city's safe, because, again, public safety, our whole, what, what, what you all elect me to do is to keep you all safe.
Conrad?
Let's all think back to our civics lesson back in middle and high school, what's the word here? Federalism. Arizona versus the United States told us that this is only gonna be a national issue, city government hands off.
Okay, Eric, this will be the last question that I have here, okay? Um, it was concerning harvest farms developers, are you, uh, do you, any of you know about the harvest farms? There's a property down in the Punggol area that they want to build, and developer wants to increase the density there, in exchange, he's going to do a more robust stormwater management plan that is going to become, are any of you aware that they have a plan?
I saw the plan, and from what the plan looks like is that those lots, I think the city code, Greg Ramon, it'd have to be fifteen thousand square feet to put a house on, so I think this is well under fifteen thousand square feet. Um, I looked at the plan, it looks like a great plan, um, the citizens of Punggol are, from what I'm told, are against it. Um, the green space that they have on that plan will help fix some of that flooding issue. Now, I don't think it's gonna go all the way from Asheville Park all the way out to that, because this is on the corner, I believe, of, uh, Indian River Road and, and, uh, Pung and Prince Zero. And so, um, it's a great project, I mean, you know, developer put his money into it, he's, you know, I think this, this project, it, I believe is gonna go before the next city council, I think some revisions have to be made to it for it to really comply, but the citizens are against it, and, I mean, it's, it's, it's a real tough situation, but I think we're gonna take a look at it in January, and then we'll definitely have a better solution on that. Hopefully, hopefully the builder will make some adjustments.
Conrad?
Direct city government democracy. We have Prince Zero and Punggol saying they don't want that, I wanna listen to that.
Sabrina?
I think it's important to consider what the citizens want in that area, uh, if it's near the green line, we don't want to continue building in that area, that's a boundary, and I think you should consider, the citizens have to say for that.
Thank you. We will now go to closing arguments, and since we started at that end of the table with this way, we will go to Eric Gray and go that way.
Folks, thank you all for coming out tonight and enduring us and everything like that, we would appreciate you. Um, I think I can speak for you, we all want a more efficient city government, and I think that we're gonna work on that. Uh, we have a choice to make. November, we wanna make sure that we want the status quo, or do we want to keep things the way the August status quo, or do we want some real effective change or something like that? We have to be leaner on our budget, as you are at home. We're gonna need six votes, and I've been hammering that all night, we need six votes. We don't need regionalism, we don't need, uh, uh, pro- public-private partnerships all over the place, we need to make Virginia Beach the great city that it is. And again, if you come to city council, and I've seen a lot of you that have spoken, please don't raise my taxes, please, I have a, I'm, I'm on a fixed budget. And Mr. Elkin, next speaker, next speaker. Folks, we have got to, that's gonna change, and we have got to do better, that's gonna change in January when you put me on city council, because you're in, you are my special interest. Again, as John Moss would say, all the way with Eric Gray, I need your help, thank you very much.
I wanna say thank you all for coming out here tonight, uh, this is what it's about, community coming together, voicing your opinion. Uh, this is what it's about, community coming together, voicing your opinion, giving feedback and listening. Um, I've been working in the community for a long time. I've been doing the work. Uh, as again I said, I served as an instructor and a mentor for the Kimsfield Entrepreneur Academy. It's my pleasure to do so because that's what it's all about. I also serve as a police chaplain of the Virginia Beach Police Department and I've been endorsed as well by our Virginia professional firefighters. And I ask you to join me so that I can continue to work in the community, but I want you to put me to work. On November sixth, put me to work for you, for you and the community. Your vote is a vote not just for me, but it's a vote for you, the community and for your voice to be heard. Thank you.
Show of hands, who have heard of the Hippocratic Oath? Here's the conduct. I affirm by the designers of our republic and you all as witnesses here that I will carry out the following oath according to my ability. To hold my colleagues as equals and neighbors, to seek their counsel when needed and to defy it when needed. I will vote to have the government help the community but never to have it do harm. I will now vote to poison the community with bureaucracy nor suggest such a vote. Upon following these commitments, may my position remain. Upon failing to commit, may the public speak out. Thank you.
I think we would all agree we have three fine candidates here. You have a hard choice to make. Would you please give them all a round of applause?